More absent Alderman Panellion.
Here.
Alderman Tac.
Here.
Alderman Schoenhyder.
Here.
Alderman Palmer.
Here.
Alderman Edelman.
Here.
Eight present, one absent. Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Birdy. Can you please join me in a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first order of business this evening is comments by Mayor. I have one which is, I'd like to present the Lake Forest Preservation Foundation. They're going to have a talk about the annual historic preservation awards. Would you please come on up?
Thank you. I'm Steve Douglas, former Commissioner on the HPC and currently a member of the Board of Directors of the Lake Forest Preservation Foundation. And I'm joined here tonight by our Executive Director, Marcy Kerr. Our mission is to protect the historic visual character of Lake Forest. One of the ways we try to further our mission is to honor individuals and organizations who have demonstrated a commitment to excellence in the preservation of Lake Forest's architectural heritage. Roughly one month ago, we presented the 2012 awards at our annual meeting, and I've been asked to recap those awards for you here tonight. This year, we had four award categories. Preservation focuses on the maintenance and repair of historic materials and the retention of a property's form as it evolved over time. Restoration and rehabilitation restores a property to how it was at a particular time in history while acknowledging the need for alterations or additions to meet the requirements of changing use. New construction infill creates new structures that are sympathetic to and in harmony with neighboring historic properties or an historic district. And finally, renovation involves restoration to a former, better state as by repairing or rebuilding. Our first awards are the preservation awards. And first, we have Howard Van Doren Shaw's 1909 Glen Rowan House where Craig Bergman undertook the preservation of the oldest continuously operating terrace-based reflecting pool for Lake Forest College. This involved not only the pool itself, but also the fountain, the terrace, and surrounding plantings, all with marvelous results. Next, we have 420 East Woodland Road. Originally, this was two 19th-century cottages that were joined, and then later combined with an addition to the east, two-story addition that you see on the right. Here, the molt and elies have repaired and repainted all the wood windows and trim, made new cypress, storm windows and screens for all the windows to replace the previous aluminum ones, disassembled, repaired, repainted, and then reassembled all the shutters, as well as numerous interior improvements. Our third preservation award goes to 971 Verde Lane, designed by Stanley Anderson in 1928, and originally the home of the architect. The Obsitnicks are just the third family to live here, and they have painstakingly preserved the original charm and character with extensive roofwork, custom siding at the gables, custom wood storm windows, preservation of the original front door, the shutters, the screen doors, the screen porches, and extensive interior work as well, all with beautiful results. Now, let's look at our restoration and rehabilitation awards. First are the gardens and associated secondary structures to David Adler's 1931 Kersey Coats Reed House at 1310 Lake Road. Owners Mr. and Mrs. Stephen Bent have restored the tennis house, gardener's cottage, and barn, and they retained Craig Bergman to completely restore and reconstruct the gardens. Next is 371 Summit, where this 20th-century home had been converted into a three-flat and allowed to decay. The O'Malleys retained Landmark Development to rehabilitate the home to its original single-family use, restoring its historic character with the addition of shutters and replacement of some windows incompatible with -- I'm sorry, replacement of incompatible windows. Last in this category is 74 Woodland, an early 1900s bungalow cottage creatively rehabilitated in harmony with the neighborhood. Here, the Randolphs have created a living space where the garage once stood, thereby greatly enhancing the home's presentation to the street. Now, let's move on to newly constructed infill awards. At 925 Acorn Trail, this new Georgian-style home honors the architecture of its notable neighbors, the LOA Farms, gatehouses, and coach house. Designed by Melikar Architects, the style of the home, the brick color, the massing, and the forms all relate well to the gatehouses to the south, making this a great example of successful infill construction. 1045 Walden Road is an elegant Tuscan villa designed by David Polton and Sharon Harvey in collaboration with their clients, the Krebs. From authentic construction techniques, materials, and finishes, to authentic craftsmanship, to the magnificent statues and fountains from Italy, this unique infill project is a result of many research trips to Italy as well as sensitivity to other homes in the surrounding historic district. And my personal favorite, the tradition of a folly or gazebo as a garden retreat goes back to the gardens of ancient Rome. In New England, where summers are short, this holds great appeal. The most exquisite one to survive from the 18th century is the Derby Summer House, designed by great Salem, Massachusetts carver and architect Samuel McIntyre for Captain Elias Haskett Derby at his summer farm in Danvers, Massachusetts in 1793. Right here in Lake Forest, at 788 East Woodland Road, Mr. and Mrs. John Crowe have created a full-scale replica of the Derby Summer House with the assistance of Chicago Architectural Firm Leader Bach &amp; Graham. The folly overlooks their garden pool and is most certainly a wonderful infill addition to their neighborhood. And finally, our renovation awards. At 910 Green Bay Road, John Krasnodobski and Chris Boyaras of Landmark Development completely renovated this handsome 1911 home, removing more recent additions which were incompatible with the original design. This was an extensive restoration and renovation project that restored the exterior to its original condition and completely renovated the interior. At 900 North Waukegan Road stand the 1917 gatehouses and coach house designed by David Adler for Elsa and A. Watson Armor. Craig Bergman and Paul Klug have extensively renovated the structures, the courtyard, and the surrounding two-and-a-half acres. Slate roofs, paneled shutters, three-hinged wooden motor house doors, the original windows, and of course, all of the gardens were part of the renovation. And last but not least, designed and built by Howard Van Doren Shaw in 1898 as his summer home, Ragdale is an extremely unique example of arts and crafts architecture. The Ragdale Foundation has just completed a comprehensive interior and exterior renovation, including, and it's a long list, the stucco facade, wood trim, wood windows, cedar shingles, porches, structural repairs, a new geothermal system, new electric, plumbing, heating, cooling, and fire protection systems, restoration of plaster, wood paneling, casework, floors, fixtures, wallpapers, and lighting, all coordinated by Johnson and Lasky Architects of Chicago. Clearly, a very complete renovation of a Lake Forest treasure. So I think you'll all agree, preservation is alive and well in Lake Forest, and the Lake Forest Preservation Foundation thanks you for your continued support of historic preservation. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions for Steve or the Preservation Foundation? I would thank you for your presentation, and also I'd like to thank all the owners of those spectacular properties and everyone that's maintained these properties and their historic tradition that they have, because it's really what makes our community so special as well. Again, thank you for the hard work in every regard.
Thank you for the effort, too.
Our next item on the agenda this evening is the comments by our acting city manager. We have Kathy Cerniak, Secretary of Transit.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Susan Kelsey, Economic Development Coordinator, is here tonight to talk about some recent successes with business recruitment and retention, and also to talk about some summer events coming up.
Good evening. Tonight, we have two speakers, Deborah McAllen from Broadacre Management and Kara Garrison from the Forest Bootery, and she's also the President of the Historic Market Square Merchants Association. But before I bring them up, we just wanted to highlight a couple of items under the business recruitment, business retention category, and then also what's happening in the summer, in the city this summer. Under business recruitment, in the last 18 months, the city's added on 15 new businesses. If you walk around town, you'll see that slowly but surely the papers coming off the windows. Pasquaz's is the most recent one. If you've driven by there on Western Avenue, he's done a beautiful job putting flowers all over, vacuum over on the west side. On the west side, actually, both the shopping strips over there have 100% vacancy. Market Square is about 98% occupancy, and they're close to finishing that up, so Deborah will give you an update on that. But there's a number of new stores. There's a Mexican restaurant opening up, I think, later this summer, early fall, and that's located next to Smith's Men's Store on Western Avenue. So at this time, I'd like to bring up Deborah McAllen with Broadacre Management to give you an update on all the new businesses they've been doing, some of the surprises they have coming up, and give you an idea of what's going on with them.
Thanks. So thank you for your invitation to come here tonight and let you know what's going on in Market Square. You may have noticed that EJ Mirage and Izzy &amp; Joe, which is the same owner, have merged their two stores, and they're moving into the old Heelander space. I think Izzy's already open, and EJ's will probably open the middle of July. We also have UB Nails, which is a nail salon over on, right around the corner from Penny's from Heaven. They're doing very well. They're very, they told me that they couldn't be more pleased. Macon Winter's Design has opened where the old Burmeister space was, right behind the Fields Building. They have two women from Lake Forest who have put a lot of their own resources into the space, and it's absolutely gorgeous. And they do interior design. They also have home furnishings and gifts, so you should definitely go by and see it. It's just spectacular. Sarah Campbell is a new store that's coming to the old Izzy &amp; Joe space on Westminster. They are out of Boston. They have stores Boston, Concord, Newport, Rhode Island, and Nantucket. So they're planning an opening before the end of June. They're moving very quickly there. We also have coming up discussions with several restaurant options for the Toy Station space, which, you know, we think would be a good option there, that, you know, another restaurant downtown, I think, would be a good way to bring additional shoppers to the area. We have another store that we're talking to about going into the EJ Mirage space that exists in Market Square right now. We're almost done with the lease negotiations. It's another high-end women's clothing store from, they have stores in Paris, London, Germany, Mill Valley, Pasadena. So it's exactly the kind of thing that we want to have in the square. We're also talking to someone about the lower level of Marshall Fields, which would be a different kind of use, and, you know, we hope that that'll be done in the next couple of months. Toy Station, again, that lease was only up about three months ago, and we've had a lot of people interested, but we really, really want the right fit for that space. So I think that's, oh, and also, we're going to have our new website in the next couple of weeks. We'll be launching, and we will have not only the store directory and available space, but we're also going to have links to the community. So that's, I don't think there's anything else to talk about unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Deborah. Any questions for Broadacre or for Susan?
Oh, and I also wanted to say a special thank you not only to the city for all the cooperation we've been getting in terms of redoing things in the square, but also from Kathy Cerniak, who's been really helpful in getting our new tenants in and kind of accustomed to what the ordinances are, and also especially to Susan Kelsey, who's just been absolutely tireless in her assistance with us. And I think it's a really great level of cooperation that we have right now at Market Square and the rest of the city, so.
We've been working on trying to get more and more events going on in the square. Susan Kelsey has really let up a lot of different things with the farmer's market. Then, we also have different groups that do things in the square. That's been historically the case with the book fairs and that kind of stuff. But we've been trying to do fun things. We did Mother's Day promotion. We're trying to do a little golf outing in the square right before Father's Day where they can hit balls and putt around and that kind of stuff. It's just trying to liven it up and keep us, you know, a place-todestination shop. So, you know, the more people in town that would, that come up in town, the bigger volume all the stores in the square have, and the better it is for all of us, so. We have other events. We have our sidewalk sale. We have all the concerts in the square. And once again, it's a real collaborative efforts between the city, Market Square, and all the merchants on the square. We've really been trying to actually work, now the next thing, phase is, is to work together as a team better and to communicate so that things kind of move along without too many glitches. That's our next phase where we've been working
Susan, I do have a question for you. How is your app working, Live, Work, Play? Have you had feedback from that?
The app, the Live, Work, Play app, which is available on the iPhone and the Android, we've had over 1,200 downloads. We met this morning with the developer team, and we're launching a new summer campaign that coincides with all of our summer activities. We have over 50 summer events going on. So we're launching that with 500 hot dogs at Left Bank. So all you have to do is go over to Left Bank. The coupon should be up and running by tomorrow, and so that'll run until we're out of 500 hot dogs. But we also have a lot of other merchants. So far, we have 26 merchants that have signed on with their coupons or their perks or their loyalty cards. So it just keeps growing. The downloads keep coming, and the merchants find it, it's a new tool that they can use to communicate with their customer, and some of the things, the options that they can use to, with social media is with Facebook. They can push messages out to their customers. So it's a matter of just working with the merchants and finding events to tie these things to.
Good. Wow, that's fantastic.
And that's it for the presentation. It's been a pleasure to work with Kara and Deborah, and so we just wanted to let you know all the new businesses that have come to Lake Forest, all the retention efforts we're doing, the recruitment efforts, and be happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions for Susan?
I have one question. To what extent are these marketing efforts sort of being directed beyond the community? You know, a lot of these special events and some of the stores that are coming into Market Square, I would think would have a more regional appeal, and they're pretty unique. And I'm just curious, obviously, having the app that's out there for anybody who wants it, but just curious what other things are being done or contemplated on that front.
There's a monthly debate at our meetings. Do we target Lake Forest residents? Do we target outside Lake Forest? Some of the, we've been trying to collect data, and 2013, we decided would be the year of really nailing down who is our customer. But when, kind of just polling the stores that come to the meetings, 40 to 70%, I guess, would be Lake Forest, Lake Bluff residents. And then the outside, we did do an intercept survey with the Deer Path Art Fair. It was about a year ago, and myself and two interns were standing on the corner collecting zip codes of people walking by. Zip codes and their impression of Lake Forest, and of course, the impressions were lovely. What's there not to love? But in collecting the zip codes, we were really surprised to learn that the majority of the people coming to the Deer Path Art Fair were from the west suburbs. So few from the north, hardly any from Chicago, a few along the North Shore, but it was all coming from the west suburbs. So as we have our monthly meetings, and we're meeting again Thursday, to really try to figure out how we can tighten up this machine of working together. How can we allocate job responsibilities and to make sure who's doing press, who's doing outreach, who's doing the planning, who's doing the contact of the events, and to really make it a smooth-running machine. And historically, we haven't had that. So now, we're finally putting organizations together and making a smooth-running machine to recruit and identify who our customer is.
When you say western suburbs, what would be some examples of communities like?
They went to, it was Long Grove, Buffalo Grove, Arlington Heights, Gray's Lake.
Okay, so west of here, not west of Chicago. Okay.
Right, right, right. West of Lake Forest. Yeah. And we were surprised that there weren't many coming up along the North Shore. They were coming from Chicago. There was a fair number, about, I think it was 6% coming from the north, from Milwaukee, Burlington, Geneva coming down. So 2013, we're really going to focus on nailing down, working with the largest stores, collecting the zip codes of their customers, working with the smaller stores, trying to just collect their customer lists, and really nailing down who's our customer.
Good.
Susan, it's been beautiful out every weekend lately. And the farmer's market, I was hoping would have started, you know, maybe in April, just to complement the weather, but when's it officially start, and what are the hours?
The farmer's market officially starts Saturday, June 23. The hours are from 8 until 12:30. We actually moved it back a week this year because last week, last year when we opened, there wasn't enough produce. So who would have known that summer was starting early this year? So the farmers are chewing at the bit. They're ready to come, and we have our apple pie guy coming for you, Kent.
I'm ready. Definitely ready.
But it's June 23.
I thought they took a store over here just for Kent. Is that a different pie person?
It doesn't matter. I'll be there.
Okay, thank you.
But no, looking forward to it.
Yeah. It should be great. We have 25 vendors. I like to tell people you can buy almost anything except 2% milk. We've got bison there. We have organic chicken. We have vegetables, fruit, all kinds of desserts, appetizers, drinks, and it's a food-only market this year, so only food. I do have one extra tent that I'm allowing businesses, if they want to come, and they're a Lake Forest business, we'll let them kind of showcase their goods, and it's a rotating Saturday. They can have half a table or a full table. You know, give our businesses an opportunity to say hello to their customers, but it's a food-only event, and it should be terrific.
And the locations change this coming year?
Yeah, we moved the location based on the survey last year, so now you'll find it Saturday, June 23 at the East Lake Forest Train Station parking lot, just north of Deer Path and east of McKinley Road, west of McKinley Road.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Thanks.
I want to thank you for all your hard work and all your efforts, because I know over the last few years, certainly as this economy keeps struggling, but certainly it shows that your efforts have paid off to get new businesses and attract new businesses and find out what fits in our downtown. So really thank you for all your hard work. Our next item on the agenda this evening is comments by council members.
Just a quick comment. For first ward meetings, and I think we're about the last ward to have a meeting, we will be having our open house meeting on July 12 at 7:00 at Gordon. And hopefully, we'll have a good audience there, but first ward meeting is July 12, 7:00 at Gordon.
I'm going to piggyback on that. We actually have ours before you. The second ward meeting will take place next Tuesday, the 12th, at 7:00 PM at Cherokee School. And so anybody in the second ward that would like an update on what's going on there around the town, and then in particular, would like to have an opportunity to address myself and Dave Moore about any issues in the second ward, with a full complement of city staff there to back us up with follow-ups, this is your opportunity. So hopefully, we'll see you next Tuesday evening, and I think there's free cookies and coffee and things like that too, right?
George, just out of curiosity, I don't live in second ward, but could I go to that meeting?
I can use all the help I can get, so.
Okay, just.
You're welcome.
Okay.
No pie. We don't have pie, though. It's at Croya? Oh, okay. I stand corrected. They've always, yeah, I would have been in the wrong place. I guess they've moved it from prior years. Okay, so it's not at Cherokee School. It's at Croya, which, does everybody know where that is? I'm not sure everybody in the second ward knows. It's at the north end of the rec center, so.
Any other comments?
Thank you, Ramish. I would, I.
Any other comments by council members? Now, we'll move on to opportunity for citizens to address the City Council on non-agenda items. Yes, sir.
Pasquazi, 172 Washington Road. This past weekend, I had a sad situation for myself to visit a couple of friends of mine. One was at the Almond Hospital. The other one was Highland Park Hospital, and I went there in the evening. I'm going to request that everybody on this council and everybody that's involved with the hospital better go down and see what's happening to these neighborhoods where these hospitals are. The lights, the noise, the neighborhoods, it's not good. They're giving us surveys here that they have done. We better have it done ourselves to find out for sure what they're talking about, because this is terrible. This traffic route here right now is bad, and it's going to get, I don't know what it's going to be, but it's not going to be any better for Lake Forest. It's going to destroy this town, I think. I'm just asking, just, I think it's worth looking into. It's a serious problem. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Any other public this evening? Now then, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is items for the omnibus vote consideration. We have three. I will read them each, and then you may take them together or all as you wish. First is the check register for period April 28 to May 25, 2012, second being an award of a contract for Lake Forest share of the 2012 Joint Annual Pavement Patching Contractual Program, which we did get an update from Ramisha on earlier at the committee of the whole meeting, and the third being an approval of the May 21, 2012 Regular City Council Meeting Minutes. Any questions or comments?
I move to approve the omnibus items.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Panellion.
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seven yeas, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Birdy. Our next item on the agenda this evening is a consideration of a recommendation from the Plan Commission in support of the tentative and final plat approval of a two-lot plan preservation subdivision, the Alderwood subdivision, a property located in the west side of Waukegan Road, south of Regency Lane, commonly known as 1500 Waukegan Road. We did have Kathy Cerniak also speak to this earlier at the committee of the whole meeting. We are looking for two motions this evening. One is approval of a motion granting tentative and final plat approval, and the second being an approval of an ordinance granting the associated special use permit. Any questions or comments for Kathy?
I move to approve a motion granting tentative and final plat approval for the Alderwood subdivision as recommended by the Plan Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
I move to waive first reading. Can I do this in one? Can I move to waive first reading and grant final approval of the ordinance approving the associated special use permit?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Panellion.
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seven yeas, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Birdy. Our next item on the agenda this evening is new business.
I believe we still need, that was to waive, I believe, so I think we still need to approve the.
I thought we could do it in one.
All right.
You have to do it in two?
We should, yes.
Grant final approval.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Panellion.
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Seven yeas, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Birdy. Our next item on the agenda will be new business. Any items? No, we have our next item then being additional items for council discussion.
Yes, sir.
Just real briefly, along the lines of that Country Day Wetlands restoration, I can't remember the exact name of it, but Open Lands has a summer program for little kids. I think it's called Little Explorers, maybe, and it's similar to what they're doing with the preschool kids over there. It's a great program in the summer. My little guy went to it, so I highly recommend that. Secondly, I tried to get Steve Barg here tonight to give a presentation for Lake, conservelakecounty.org, and I'm going to get him here at a future council session. Conserve Lake County has a program called Conservation at Home, and it's about landscaping your home with native plantings, grasses, and so forth, and it's more about sustainable landscapes at home. Less lawn, less fertilizer, less cutting the lawn, more natural transitional kind of landscaping.
Like weeds.
Yeah, and buckthorn. So if any of you get a chance, remember, it's Conserve Lake County. Look it up. Go to their website. They're backlogged right now with requests from residents to do.
They're backlog right now with requests from residents to do inventories or an analysis of your own home where you can start to do the transition from ornamental landscaping to native landscaping.
Very good.
Just to follow on that, if people are interested in having a more, maybe a little less formal, but a little quicker perhaps, review of their property, the city foresters here in Lake Forest are happy to come out. If you call City Hall, they'll come out and spend half hour, 45 minutes with you, walking your property, identifying invasive species, helping you get control of all those things that they're going to be taking out of that property at Lake Forest Country Day School.
Just be careful if you have any diseased ash trees.
That's right. That's right. Watch your ash.
Well, that'll actually...they'll actually identify them for you and give you recommendations for treatment and/or removal.
As Alderman Palmer said, be sure to cover your ash.
I actually said, watch your ash.
Any other items for discussion this evening?
I would like to have a discussion in front of the council about an issue that came up when I was first running for city council, actually during the caucus vetting process. I was asked questions about my role at Lake Forest Hospital and whether or not this could be construed as a conflict of interest in terms of my participation on the city council. At the time I was asked that question, I responded by saying that I didn't believe that I had any conflicts and that I didn't think that it would affect my ability to serve the council or the community effectively. This issue has obviously come back up because of the pending presentation of the master plan to the city council in a few weeks. I have had the opportunity to discuss this with Vic Philippini in terms of the actual legal aspect of it. I described to Vic my personal business situation as how...as it relates to the hospital. I won't go into detail for that here. If anybody wants details, I can get it to them. But I thought it might be a reasonable time to have a discussion among the council members. My initial response to the question was that I personally saw no need for me to remove myself at any level from the discussion about the hospital or subsequent voting. But I also made the comment that I thought it would be best for the city council to consider my situation and make recommendations to me, and that I would honor their determination as to whether or not they thought this was something that I should participate in, and if so, to what extent. So I would appreciate it if the council members would give some thought to this in a public forum, and I'll be happy to answer any questions about it.
Do you want to do this tonight?
Well, I don't particularly ever want to do it, but I think tonight is a reasonable time since I would like not to drag this out. I'd like to know what my status is in terms of, you know, how I should be involved going forward, and I think it would be helpful to take it off the table for those who feel that this issue might not be adequately addressed before we get into the process.
Okay. What's the nature of the relationship with Lake Forest Hospital?
Well, I'm a physician, orthopedic surgeon, who's had staff privileges there for 20 years. I do 95% of my inpatient surgery at the hospital. I actually am a competitor of the hospital in the sense that I'm a part owner of a freestanding surgery center. I own physical therapy services. I own imaging services. I'm not an employee of the hospital. I am a partner of Illinois Bonin Joint Institute. I receive no financial compensation from Lake Forest Hospital for the work that I do there. I do my own billing and collections, et cetera. I am a consumer at the hospital. My children were born there. I've had surgery there. My parents have all had surgery there. My brother's had surgery there. I've had, you know, relatives pass away there, so it is a...an intimate part of my family in Lake Forest, but that's really the extent of my relationship.
Are you economically affected one way or the other if the hospital expansion plans go forward or don't?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Anyone else have questions? I don't see a conflict.
I have a question. Can you take a look at my bum? In all seriousness, I...did we all get the same legal brief from Vic? I don't see any conflict there. Whether there's the old hospital there and they never build a new hospital, or they build a new hospital, your relationship is going to remain the same. So you have no pecuniary incentive to approve it or deny it, other than as a professional in the medical industry, you might want to approve it because you think excellence of medical care is paramount in this community, and a new hospital might provide that. So I don't see any potential conflicts. I mean, yes, there's potential, but I don't see any real conflict. Mike, I'd go for the rating. I've spoken about it personally as well, and I think not only do I not see a conflict, but I think he brings tremendous insight and great knowledge to the process and, you know, there's no one else...we've got a lot of lawyers on this group, and there's no one else who brings that kind of insight relative to the process, relative to the building itself, relative to what's functionally viable, perhaps economically viable. And I think you bring much to the table in the debate and the discussion, and I'm delighted that you're part of the group.
That wasn't a knock on lawyers, was it?
Take it however you'd like.
I think we need to expand the courthouse. I'm a banker, so be careful.
I'd like to echo Alderman Schoenhyder's comments. I didn't see any evidence of any material conflict, except maybe on a speculative basis. And the value of having somebody who is an actual participant in the medical field as we go through this consideration, I think, is going to be enormous, and it would be a great handicap not to have that council. So since we have that...we have access to that council today, why would we, absent an obvious and clear conflict, why would we ever deny the city the value of that council? I am completely comfortable with the situation as it stands.
Well, my back's a little stiff, and I'm not sure what to do for it by sitting here. But no, on the conflict issue, taking it beyond, there's a certain obligation where we could give you support and we could, you know, want your insights. It's more of a question of your belief and your impartiality on the subject. So again, I'll support. I believe that you don't have any conflicts. It's more a decision that I think you have to make. Of course, we'll show you the support, and of course, we want your insight. We want your knowledge from your position, but it's a decision that I think rests with you, and I'll support you all the way, but we need your candor also, and that speaks for itself.
I agree. I think it's often said, yeah, there's absent a legal conflict, it's a personal decision based on your belief that you can be fair and impartial.
Vic, do you want any kind of a vote from us on this? Do you want any kind of a vote from us?
I don't believe that there's a need for any kind of vote. Again, I believe Alderman Tac was in impartial response to the concerns that have arisen, first having contacted me as to the legal status of his participation, but I think he was further looking for you all as colleagues to offer any insight, and I think that you've offered that with great clarity.
It's hopeful. We welcome your participation, and we look forward to your expertise in this matter. I think it's timely that you're here, so.
Okay, appreciate it.
Any other items for discussion this evening?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Leading as adjourned. Thank you.[1588.42]